And we're live.
Hello, Scouts.
We're back Scouts, welcome again. This is Town Hall number four. Second public. We got ten people, three hundred fourteen people here right now. Amazing.
Yes, sir. Hello, everybody. Good morning, good evening.
Same people from Australia already, it's mostly morning over there.
Yeah, we've been like, we've been looking in on the chat for the last couple of minutes, watching you guys chat with each other, seeing where you're from. If you haven't done so, and if you don't know already, it's my favorite part about this live, is seeing where everybody's from. So.
Here we go.
There we go, everybody.
Lots of, so many Americans.
Yeah, man, represent what?
Lost Ontario too.
Yeah, I saw Australia, Nova Scotia, Norway. Oh, New Zealand.
Where's old Nufi's at?
Michigan, Michigan, Virginia. What up, North Kackalacky?
Australian, another one. Good morning, Australia.
Clarinville, hey.
Gander, what up?
Mary's Townscope, what up? Bellevue Newfoundland, Arizona, Connecticut.
Wow, seven hundred Scouts here.
Wow, that was quick, guys.
Barry, Ontario, someone sent in two seventy-nine. Jake was here, what do you eat?
What do you ain't Jake?
What do you ain't Jake? Well, boys, welcome back. We're here again. Some people, this might be your uh first time, since it's a different day in the week. And maybe your work schedule, whatever, it all lines up better this week. So yeah, here we are, welcome. And as always, excited. Lots of stuff to talk about. Not a whole lot of creative stuff has happened, but still lots of things to work out and talk through. And still coming, wow.
Yeah, how do you guys let us know? So we normally do these on Wednesday nights. This is Thursday night for us. Do you guys, are you guys liking Wednesday or Thursday?
Don't you worry about my notes.
Oh, I don't worry about your notes. Matty's got real chicken scratch writing and he doodles all over everything.
A new member's popped up. Speaking of that, we'll do a quick update of the members, sixteen hundred forty-eight members. That's wild. And we're just under a month. Um, I think we started this whole thing on the fourth of.
October?
Yeah. Feels like a lot longer than, doesn't it?
It does. This has been in your heart for a long, long time, so.
It has.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're finally here. It's amazing to think of this, how it's all gonna come to be, here together. Um, through a YouTube channel, through the internet, through live streaming. Uh, we really got a opportunity here to connect. There's a lot, a lot of people here. As you can see, there's eleven hundred sixty souls right now, all sharing this livestream and a lot of people here, cause they're interested in what we're talking about Camp Scout. And that's a nonprofit, um, hopefully a registered charity at some point. Myself and Kelly are founding, along with your help, everyone's help. Not just the members, you don't have to be a member, we're not pushing subscriptions, we're not gonna share anything with the members that we wouldn't share with everyone. Uh, the members have decided, uh, we wanna share with everybody. Um, yeah, along with everyone's helper and do this together, cause there's a lot of people out there, you know, there's everyone in this chat plus tens and tens and hundreds of thousands of people watching every week, and we're getting so many emails and so much love and support, um. It'd be crying shame not to do something to help, um. And simply put, this might be your first time here, so I actually wrote down the mission statement to try and sum it up nicely. This isn't official, um, but this is what I think for mission statement. Camp Scout helps people reconnect with nature through community-led outdoor experience and education. So basically that means is, you know, neighbor to neighbor, brother and sister to brother and sister, uh, gonna hold each other's hands and bring each other into woods. Long story short, a million different ways to go in the woods, a million different ways to go out in nature, but do know there's a hell of a lot of people out there that've already got the experience and the desire to share what they know with other people, um. And yeah, there's a big disconnect right now between, not just us as adults, all of us are disconnected too. My god, even us out here, the phones have their effect, um, we're so connected now. Which is great in a lot of ways, just like this, this is a great aspect of it. And the bad part is people are being disconnected with nature, especially the youth. Um, someone needs to try to do something about it, and this isn't gonna be the end all be all. We need more people, more organizations out there working on this, but we're gonna try and do our part here with this YouTube channel with you and your support to reconnect people with nature. So that's our mission statement. Welcome to Camp Scout Town Hall.
Welcome to Town Hall. Oh my gosh, you guys are awesome in the comments. I saw Danielle Cheeseman, Danielle, you asked, is that candy cane I see? Yes, it is. We've skipped a little bit of Halloween here and gone straight to a little bit of ho- holiday Christmas cheer.
Danielle Cheeseman, Danielle Cheeseman?
Yeah, I think so.
Amazing that you seen her in the commentary like that.
I know, familiar faces, hey?
Yeah.
Plus I saw candy canes, I was like, yes.
And Kelly's starting early in Christmas stuff, we're drinking hot chocolate right now made with hot milk.
Yes, I know.
Serious we are right now.
I told Maddie, I was like, by my birthday, which is November fifteenth, this place is gonna be decorated for Christmas because yeah, the cheer is so nice and the lights and everything really make it cozy when the days get dark and they're getting dark fast.
Someone's asking, the total side verb, someone just asked where we get the mugs. We didn't make these mugs, these aren't the mugs that are gonna be for sale on the website, maybe someday, because they are beautiful.
This one says Mrs. Scout. What an honor.
How good is that?
Yeah, one of our sweet friends, Mary, she's a Scout herself, and she does pottery down Nova Scotia, and she was visiting here. And yeah, we met up with her over in the harbor and she had a bunch of great little goodies to give us. And they're awesome, so big, everyone loves a big mug.
Maybe we should share her contact on here someday, cause a lot of people probably order some mugs from her.
Yeah, I'll see if she wants me to do that.
Yeah. Um, CJ Jenkins, love the mission statement, thank you CJ.
Yes, thanks buddy.
Love ya. Fifty bones, US dollars, we're up here in Canada, so US dollars come in, it's just like cha-ching, US dollars. Um, anyone's first time here, you've seen those numbers roll through here. There's no pressure to send any kind of anything, just be here with us. But just so you know, anything that does come in during these live streams, during these chats, all the money that comes in each month from the ten dollar a month memberships, or eight dollars wherever you are in the world, um, all that goes directly to Camp Scout, to the charity, to the cause. Um, that's not going in our pockets, so we're keeping track of what we got. Speaking of that, right now today, we're at twelve thousand four hundred and four dollars. Raised by this community, um, in one month, and that's pretty, pretty dang good, if you ask me.
That's really good. You guys are so generous with with your time, spending your time with us every Sunday, jumping in on these live Town Hall meetings, every Wednesday or Thursday. And yeah, contributing extra with the extra love and extra energy, uh, to Camp Scout. It's really incredible to see all of it and to know that there is so much good that we can do with the money that is coming in. You know?
Oh, so much, um.
So much good stuff.
And that's the real dream here, um, that's not a part of what you guys gotta worry about, but for me, in my little world, my dream is to have this, um, charity running, um, at the same level or beyond any major charity that you can think of right now. But rather than the charity be bogged down in all that administration cost, and like only forty percent of your donation actually gets to where it's trying to go, um, my dream is to be able to fuel all that and cover that and have no admin costs to the charity, um, so a hundred percent or ninety-nine percent of the donations could go right to where it's supposed to go, you know? On the back end, you do need some paid people, you got a lawyer, you got a bookkeeper, you got accountants, um, um, stuff like that. And I think it'd be amazing if you could just keep this thing rolling, um, frictionless. You know, frictionless, look at sixteen hundred thirty-six people here, Thursday night, happy early Halloween to peeps.
Yeah, happy early Halloween. We hope you guys have a great day tomorrow getting out and if you're trick or treating or you got the kiddos with you. Always good stuff. Actually, I saw something that was like, if you're taking your kids trick or treating, go to nursing home, stop by a nursing home because they, like they have candy and treats out and they love seeing young kids. And a lot of the times, like they get skipped over because they're at a nurse, nursing home, you know? So I saw that and I was like, you know what, if I was still a kid, I'd totally go. And, uh, yeah, thinking, you know, some, some grandparents or older folks like don't have grandkids or don't get to see them and it's really heartwarming. So if you guys are in an area that has like nursing homes or old folks homes or whatever, go and visit them for Halloween, they would love to see you guys dressed up.
It's easy pickings too, peeps. Pull the curtain up, turn the curtain off, you walk inside, you get, you know, like fifty, seventy doors. No side shack around, no driving, you sit back and let the youngsters run around, that'd be, that's actually a great idea.
Yeah, forget the buckets and baskets. I always brought a pillowcase. I always went around my neighborhood and with a pillowcase, so I was like, I really hope I can fill it to the top. I never did, but yeah. Anyhow.
Yeah, the old candy hunt. No trick or treaters out here.
Yeah, no trick or treaters out here, only one we could go and knock on Gord's door.
Yeah, I told Patty I wanted some treats tomorrow, he said no.
No.
Alright, this is a quick peek into comments here before we keep going. Oh, another one's the event, welcome. Uh, sixty members right here in this chat tonight, wow.
Wow.
Unreal. Pillowcase for the win, absolutely.
That's right.
What is this?
Whoa, what is the gift membership?
Five Scout Adore Gift Memberships. I guess that's the thing, um.
Linda Desert Vet.
Yeah, YouTube's pretty vague on how this all works, and you really gotta do a lot of like research yourself and how it works. And apparently she, someone just bought memberships for somebody.
Oh yeah, Linda bought five memberships and buddy, I think that said James, James received one of the gifts, so he's now a member.
Oh no shit.
Oh my gosh, that's so cool, Linda, thank you for your generosity. That is really awesome. Way to pay it forward.
Yeah.
Holy smokes.
Yeah, wow, unreal. Um, speaking of that, speaking of the members and us all connecting here, a new tool that we just unlocked this morning, I woke up first thing this morning, got my coffee going, sat down at the computer and did, you know, ten minutes of deep dive research, that's all I need to get something going. Um, full, full trust. And a lot of people here were talking about Discord. Now, some people hear me say the word Discord, means nothing to you. Uh, I tell like three weeks ago, the word Discord meant nothing. Um, you know, in regards to the internet, um, apparently a lot of people love Discord, it works great. We set up a Discord this morning and we turned it on for the first time this morning. And my mind is kinda blown about how good of a tool that is to connect us. Uh, we clicked on one thing and we're just in some virtual chatroom. And I heard someone's voice, I was like can they hear us? And like, we start talking, we're talking to some girl, uh, Matilda. Um, in the UK, she's in London, UK, probably nighttime for her, morning for us. And we're there chatting, wait, and I even clicked the button, boom, turn on the camera, boom, they turn on their camera and we're having back one on one and then next thing you know, there's four or five people in that chatroom, everyone's got their cameras on, everyone's got their mics on, um. It's a real tool, it's kinda like a live stream here, but you guys can actually be there and we can see your face and hear your voice, like hearing the first Scout voice this morning, that was the first Scout voice I ever heard right through the internet.
Yeah, we were like, Matilda, this is so cool. Yeah, it's basically like a lot of people use it for gaming and streaming and things like that, but there are so many different avenues you can do it with. And it was basically like a big FaceTime call with the Scouts, and it was so cool this morning.
Yeah, totally free.
Yep.
Um, didn't cost us anything, doesn't cost you guys anything. Uh, what is Discord called? Called, uh, Camp Scout, I think, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just called, go on Discord, download the app, go on the website, whatever, uh, I'll share a link to, uh, but Discord. Yeah.
Yes, yes.
When you were in the tub, yeah, exactly, yeah. The thing snuck up on us. Yeah, things at Discord's great.
Yeah, and it's really cool because there's like these little side chats you guys can do, like, and we can also make little boards, like farming or, you know, carpentry or bushcrafty stuff, right? And you guys can just chat and talk amongst yourselves, we can jump in, say our piece, say our words or whatever. And yeah, it's a really cool tool. So if you are interested in the Discord, go ahead and find it after this video. And I believe that it is, uh, yeah, Camp Scout. Another Virginian in the chat, hey.
Yeah, the, the tools are available to us now in twenty twenty-five, like to connect us all, um. And in the Discord, not just connecting us with you and you to us, each other. Uh, and I think moving forward, we're gonna get a lot of, um, benefits out of using that platform together. Um, so it really makes it so simple, no setup, it just won't click a button. It's like the old MSN days. Except you got a, you know, video camera now, um. Anyway, that's just something, check it out, don't check it out, it's fine, it's just another way for us all to connect. Uh, there's nothing set on there, we'll just be in and out chatting. Uh, I actually put up a question on the Discord this morning and asked what, um what kind of questions should we talk about tonight at the Town Hall meeting? And we got some great questions actually from Anvil. That's the handle on Discord, Anvil, whoever you are, you're a beauty, um, some of the questions tonight are from Anvil. Uh, before that, I think getting to handle some things, uh, the big thing in my mind is, uh, what we need next, um. As we said, only ones involved right now, proper, it's Kelly and myself. Um, my brother-in-law Mitch and my sister Danielle are up in Alberta and they're gonna be helping to handle some of the background stuff, dealing with the lawyers and whatnot, but also doing all the merch, that's what their main thing is gonna be doing is my sister will actually handle the merch, get it right from distributor ourselves, she'll package it up and mail it to you guys. Um, so right now, that's all we got. Um, I do somewhat feel a little bit drowned, not drowning, that's exaggerating, um. I know we can do it, I just know that we need a bigger team, we need more people. Uh, me and Kelly are only two people, my sister and my brother-in-law are only two more people. Um, excuse me, to get this thing to where we dream of it being and, and to get it as big as it's gonna be. Because like right now, it's two thousand one hundred seventy people in here on a Thursday evening, chatting about some hypothetical camp that we're all gonna start together, um, we're gonna need more help. And me and Kelly, we're not professionals, we've never, um, run a charity and we're getting advice from professionals or telling us like um, running a registered charity or nonprofit, um, in Canada is pretty, you know, pretty serious business. Um, there's a lot of stuff going on there, uh, so we needed some help, so in my mind, um, I think we need another board member. Right now, we have Kelly and myself, we have one close friend, um. All of us, three of us together have, you know, varied experiences and things to bring to the table. What we're missing is someone that has run with nonprofits before, someone that has been involved with charities for years. They were looking for someone that ideally in my mind, someone that's already done their career, retired or semi-retarded, had lots of time. Um, and just wanna dig into this, um, cause there's a lot to do. If we had the right person being the you know, the, the paper master, um, of this thing and just helping get all the the fine print and the, the I's dotted and the T's crossed, I think it'd be great, someone with, with the background of that. Um, so I think we need to start taking on applications. Um, however we're gonna do that, we've already got a couple people we're talking to in the emails now, um. Calls need to happen, vetting needs to happen, um, we can't just say yes to every person offers their help, not cause we can't handle all the help. Just because you know what, it's like a twenty twenty-five and half the people in this chat right now could be bots, bots for all we know. You know, you never know, even us, you can AI this whole thing if you wanted to. So need to be careful, move slow. Um, I'm just saying right now, we need help. So if you are one of these people that you've already spent a career working with charities, nonprofits, camps, youth groups, whatever it is, and you really think you got the time, you know how to commit uh, yourself to help and build this up, because we're not, we're not dreaming small, we're dreaming big. We want this children's wish level or more. Um, we can do a lot together. Reach out to us, um, send us an email, our email is linked in the bio of the YouTube, and you know, put it, your title, um. Board member, so, in the subjective email title, put out a board member application, so you can really pick it out and find it fast, cause a lot of emails um, coming in. And if maybe if not you, maybe you know someone, maybe it's your pop, maybe it's your, your aunt, someone that you know has done a lot of this and they, they wanna help, so. Yeah.
And I think with the application, I think s- at some point, we will have like a application submission or something of the sort where you can put in your say resume or your, um, references and, you know, the things that you've done. That way, it's in like a very easy to process format for us and the, and our team to be able to decipher through. I know when I was looking for jobs, I would put anything on my resume to get the job, so it's really important that, you know, everyone's super honest about what they are able to do and, um, you know, I did a couple of things on Canva and called myself a graphic designer, like that's not exactly right, you know?
No, this is full white collar, you know, professional career person we're looking for. Also, excuse me, my god. They're choking me up. Um, with that, talking about applying, if you wanna be the board member that we're looking for, remember that this is a public platforms, a public community, this isn't your typical charity or nonprofit, that, you know, ninety-nine percent of things happen behind closed doors, this is public, um, and our board members, we want them to be, not to say you're gonna be YouTubers, or you're gonna be out here all the time. But we need to at least be able to make public who you are and why you were, cause in my mind, the best, the best insurance we got to make sure we have the right people involved with us is knowing that they gotta answer all you, not just to us, they got the whole Scout community to answer to if you know, they should try and do us wrong or whatever it is, we don't want them to be able to shrivel up and disappear on us. We, we wanna be able to share all the info with you, he doesn't help vet it, um, is that a good idea? Is that not a good idea? I don't know.
Yeah, that's an example of like real life accountability, that they would be willing to say this is me, this is what I do. And, uh, and like Maddie said, instead of being behind the scenes, like a lot of these big charities or, um, nonprofits where there's fifty people up here that you never will see, um, you know, we're right here. Really, so, yeah, background checks, things like that. Yeah, it's gonna be very important that they're legit, very legit, um. Cause this is not a small, small game or a short game we're playing here, guys.
Hi, folk cord for board member. Yeah, a hundred percent. Gord is, I mean, Gord is gonna be involved with us hopefully, um, in real life. Again, we need, you know what I'm talking about, we need that, that professional career type. People that we are, we're called Space Contents out here, we're the camera, um, running a YouTube channel and just building this old house, um. Yeah, we need someone else, someone else, maybe it doesn't happen. That's what I'm throwing through, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking. Um, yeah, security guard Gord.
Yes, that's right.
Oh, god. Oh, Andrew Banks raised, I wanna hear Patty say, oh, croak, croak.
Oh my gosh, he can say it now.
Oh, Cozy sixty-six-six, oh, that cracks me up, dude.
What's up, Peyton, I see you there, got my brother on the chat, that's awesome. Where's Miss Beebe? She's sleeping on the bed. She's on bedrest, she hurt her paw a little bit ago, she just rubbed it raw, so she's taking bedrest.
You say seeing Peyton in there?
Yeah.
Oh wow, I don't know how you pick up people like that.
I got eyes of a hawk, man, I really do.
Twenty-two hundred sixty-three Scouts here right now, my word. What a powerful tools internet thing is, but it's like, look at this, right here in the island of upgrade, running all this off a couple solar panels. Starlink, um, yeah, isn't that wild?
Yeah.
So wild, it still trips me out sometimes about how on both ends of the spectrum you can be. Out here, you know, digging holes all day, putting in old school foundations for, uh, you know, your new house, at the same time in here you're doing this.
Yeah, it is pretty, pretty crazy, pretty crazy. Did you guys ever get a new fridge? No, we haven't gotten a new fridge yet. We gotta do a wee bit of research on like energy efficient ones and ones that I think look good. If you got a tip, let me know, let a girl know.
Need to slow the chat. Again, yeah, you're probably right, um, talking about needing help, another thing we need help with is Discord. Had a bunch of people reach out already, offer that, um, be patient with us people, we're not gonna do anything quick or rash. We're moving slow on our end here, everything out there is moving really fast in the world with you guys and other directions. Here, it also has happened pretty slow, we're trying to take it slow, um, this is a big deal. You know, uh, we're not just talking about hypotheticals, you know, blowing smoke up your ass, you know, there's, there's money being spent, there's energy being put into this right now to make this a reality, so we wanna do it right and take our time, so don't worry, nothing rash, we're just asking for help.
Yeah, and I think that is a cool thing too, in this day and age, lots of things move very quickly, all the time, like boom, 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 boom. This is not like that, like we've said, this is a slow, a slow burn for the long run. So, uh, the decisions we make with everything and we all make together and vote on and stuff will be well thought out and well considered, um, you know, we're not doing anything because, oh, we have to jump on this right now or whatnot, um. Yeah.
Oh, this has been, this has been in the making for fifteen plus years.
That's right.
Okay, here are a couple of questions. Kelly hasn't seen these questions, um, and these are, some of these are from Anvil in Discord today, thank you. Um, this is one I really like, other than, other than funding, what is the best way for the community member to help support? Good question, right?
Yeah.
What do you think of that?
Other than funding, what's a good way for them to support? Tell your friends.
You know what, like I'm, I'm so happy that you said that, cause in my mind, I thought about this earlier since Saturday, and I was like, that's it, that's it. Um, that's it.
Yeah.
Our minds think alike.
Yes, they do, that's why we got married, I think. Yeah, I'd say tell your friends, um. Whether it's about like, you know, uh, Camp Scout or the channel or whatnot, it all just leads in together, um. Yeah, tell your friends and also be kind, be kind to other people, um, that's a huge thing. Yeah, hold the door open, um, if you can, pay it forward for someone's coffee, just because you can, don't be like, hey, I paid for your coffee. Just do it because you can, it feels really good and like you never know what someone else is going through that day, there could be a mom who's like super stressed trying to get the kids out the door or, you know, anyone really, um. Yeah, I'd say be kind, be nice, show love.
Tell your friends.
Tell your friends.
That's really it, um, cause right now, um, you know, with sixteen hundred forty-eight members, every month that we have that many members, that number's been increased, so we are building up our bank account for this nonprofit, for what we can do with it, which everyone wants to buy a piece of land, we're gonna buy a piece of land, we're gonna call it Scout Land. All you Scout Land peeps, just so you know, we've taken it that serious, but we, we've got the lawyers working on the paperwork uh, for something called Scout Land, um, that name, and, um, you know, it's happening, we're doing it. Um, in that process, you know, we're still a couple of weeks away from next call with the, the nonprofit lawyer. Um, that's a slow process, um, we're just in the very beginnings of it, but it's happening, you know? Yeah, Scotland, there you go. Scotland, we love Scotland, as soon as the first person Scotland, don't even know who it was, we're gonna have to figure that out someday.
Yeah.
Who sent it, um, but we love it, and that is what we wanna do first, is get a piece of land.
Yeah.
Um, also clarify right now, people here at Camp Scout, Camp Scout's not here where we live, it's not here in the island.
Yes.
Um, this is home for us. We do wanna be involved with this so much and, and be there all the time and reaching out and doing trips and helping with this community. Whatever we can do, um, we wanted to keep this place home.
Yes.
Of course, no one wants to bring, um, have their whole life on one place, what they do, where they live and their people all together, that you must spread it out a bit, so.
Yeah.
On the mainland, um.
Yes.
But we are working on that. Slowly but surely, um, everyone agreed to keep pooling our money that's coming in for land, so that's what we're doing. We're possibly gonna go to Enduro to try and apply for some land, if not, we'll buy it. We haven't found a single piece of land yet, um. Less than a hundred grand. For a good piece of land, we, we need twenty acres minimum on the ocean, here Newfoundland. Um, on the Buren Peninsula, so it's, you know, reachable, but me and Kelly, we wanna be there, cause we're your eyes and ears. You can't get through all the time, we're your eyes and ears, we'll be there, with a camera, telling you what's happening, uh, so it's gotta be close enough for us to travel back and forth. Camp number one, as the years go on, and we got, you know, Scout Land number four hundred and sixty-four. Maybe there's a person that does that, you know, in each camp that watches the fourth, I don't know how it's gonna work, but. We need more help, that's all I know. Now look at this, twenty-four hundred people here now.
Wow, my goodness.
Hundred K Canadian, a hundred K Canadian, yeah, hundred K Canadian.
Yeah.
So it's like, I don't know what, eighty, eighty-five grand probably. Hello from Toronto, we got some Toronto, up into Big Smoke, that's what they call Toronto apparently, the Big Smoke.
Wendy, what's up, boys? Yes, yes, this is it.
Yes, sir. Sir, members count, we asked for help, um. Another question for Anvil, what do you see the, uh, as the most urgent priority for Camp Scout right now? I'm asking you this, because I, I've already kinda thought about it, Kelly hasn't heard these questions, maybe I guess I'm a different answer.
Was again?
What do you see as the most urgent priority for Camp Scout right now?
I think just getting the ducks in a row. I think just getting the ducks in a row, it's a, it's a, like a timely-ish process, like lawyers are not quick to get ahold of, they are not the kind of people who are on speed dial, um, so that- Um, so that does take a while and paperwork and processing and stuff does take a minute, um. But yeah, I think just getting all of our ducks in a row, finding our people, getting the base established. So that you can continue to build and, and work up from there. Cause you wanna have a good foundation, just like you guys have seen with this house. This house is pretty crazy underneath, and I don't know how it stayed out for so long, but it did. So, just like how we're rebuilding this house and doing the foundations really well and properly, so that this house can last. Multiple hundreds of years after this, um same thing with Camp Scout, we want it to have a really solid foundation, like concrete. Concrete pillars, man, um yeah, so that it's unshakable, you know what I mean? Um, we really want it to be. The word. Yeah, we really wanted to be great and, um, yeah, lo- to be lasting a long time, longevity, longevity.
Okay, well, we got here a quick fuck glance and uh, hmm, I dropped an F-bomb.
Good lord, Matthew.
So bad for it.
Yes, is the camp just for children? No, the camp is for everybody. Uh, we're planning to have different sorts of like, um workshops based like on age or interest, right? Cause you would teach a six-year-old something very different than you would teach a forty-five-year-old, you would not explain it the same way, most likely. Um, so different age groups, different, um, yeah, workshops.
Yeah, you could have one fellow over in the corner, um knocking up a log cabin, and do the log cabin workshop for a week. And you stay there in a camp for free while you're doing the workshop and. Another thing could be a family expedition, a day hike across, you know, the local hills here, uh with a scout leader. Um, also, I like that scout leader, uh we will need scout staff at some point. Um, Scotland will need, you know, scout ranger, and that's, that's kinda why I like to call it scout ranger.
That's pretty cool.
Uh, I envision that person living there onsite, you know, small ten by twelve log cabinet will build together. And um, that ranger will be there to accept people arriving, show them around, um look after the place and uh help you get going.
That's right, cool Scout shirt and everything, green shirt, cack your pants. More a knife on the side.
Speaking of that too, we uh, I don't know if we said it last week or not, didn't we, but Chris Hannah? Maybe didn't, um but a scout from this chat has reached out, we've been in communication over. Uh some video calls and whatnot, and we've teamed up now and a guy named Chris, I think we did say this.
Oh, Chris. From Ireland.
Yeah, Chris from Ireland, um he's now working on designs and logos for Camp Scout merch.
It's very exciting.
And badges too, like, um, you know, the whole, the whole Boy Scout badge thing. Yeah, we're gonna rip a page out of the Boy Scout book, or rip a page out of Hell's Angels book, clang them together, and then it's gonna be Camp Scout. You know? Yeah, we're organized together. Power numbers, people, we can't do a whole lot of here, just two of us, plus all of us together. Eight hundred sixty-three dollars sixty-six cents. Here right now, it's amazing. In what, uh thirty-three minutes.
Good lord.
And again, that membership thing, every month it ticks over, um so keep going.
Someone asked, how will people book their time at Camp Scout? Well, hopefully, we get a place that is big enough and, uh, can, uh, what, what is the word? Accommodate, thank you, yes, thank you, accommodate as many people who wanna come. Um, so that hopefully you don't have to book a time, it will be a free camp. Um, probably some like little sweet register thing at the front, just to like mark that you were there, which would be really neat, um.
Summertime, I do imagine you're probably right, it's gonna be busy, maybe not busy, we are in Newfoundland, so we don't have that many tourists. Right, um, I think you'll be able to get in, but we definitely have something on line.
Sorry, guys.
Maybe a registry or show if it's, it's already booked up or something. But we are in Newfoundland, it's hard to get here, and it's expensive to get here. And we do realize that too, most people watch this, twenty-five hundred sixteen people right now watching this. Likely, most of you may never get to Scout Land number one in Newfoundland, for whatever reason. Um, and that will comes back to the charter program, if it's first time hearing this, your first meeting. Um, the Scout Charter Program is, um, a way that you at home. Um, if with experience, without the experience, you can put together your own actual Scout Club there in your community. Uh you and your friends or colleagues or students or whoever it is, can, um. Specialize in, you know, something in the woods, you might wanna get into kayaking, could be mountain biking, it could be bushcraft, whatever it is. And you make that your main priority of your Scout Club, we'll have some kind of application process, we'll make you official club. Send you uh gear and equipment, the outfits, some material to go off of. Help link you up with other specialists in that area, if you need the experience, um help pay for the training. Um, hire third-party instructors, come out there and teach you and the kids or you and whoever, um whatever it is, you're trying to learn in the woods. And share your story on the website, you know, official Scout Charter number six zero zero two, um down in your small town Kentucky. And yeah, that word gets out, next thing you know, there's some, you know, family down the road like, oh, you hear there's a local. Outdoor club here, oh, really, what's it called? Oh, it's called uh Camp Scout Charter. Oh, cool, let me go sign up, oh, wait, wait, I can get a mountain bike or a kayak, go learn all this stuff for free? And it's all tied to a YouTube channel, there's a big giant online community behind it, tell you, the kids lead it up. The kids lead it up, and it's gonna be easy to find the people to run these charters, cause a lot of people already reached out about it. Um, everything just outdoor stuff, or it could be someone with a small firm that wants to do, um, teach people and especially youth. Um, how to have a small scale firm, have a garden, also just hands-on stuff, I love the idea of having some old welder. Put on some workshop, um and bring kids in, um and just show them how to work their hands. Cause everyone kinda agrees that younger generations, um, they're just different. And, yeah, definitely, if you look at them, you watch them, I observe them myself, they definitely do seem fairly uh buttery fingers. You know, it's a nice way to put it. Uh, I don't think times, I think the kids have changed, I think times have changed, and they're not getting enough exposure. So. Yeah, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I heard someone say, is it like a four H or do we have four Hed, um, up in Canada? I don't even know if we have four H in Canada, I know. Oh, you do? Cool, yeah, I did four H when I was younger and we did like horse stuff and went to. Like all these horse tests and competitions and stuff like that, so yeah, basically be like specialized little Scout charters. Like, like four H. That's a really good way to like. Put it in your mind like that, yeah.
Think four H, think Boy Scouts. Think biker club. Mix it all together, and that's the Camp Scout, but we're gonna fund it all through the internet frictionlessly. Um, not just by donations through all this stuff, this is really gonna help too, um. But just all of us, you got enough eyeballs in one place, working together and, and watching something, it's just, it's gonna generate energy. And who knows who's watching this, you know, eventually someone will call us up and be like, hey, I'm, you know. Scout number whatever, and I wanna, I wanna play, you know, Scout Land number four, here's the money, here, go do it. And we trust you and the team that you guys got in place, that this might as well go where it should, um. Yeah, it's, it'll, it'll happen as time goes on.
Yeah, there's so many good people out there, like as you guys can see in the chat, you guys are all interacting together too and. You know, gifting memberships and just saying, you know, you're peace to each other, there's so many good people out there and. Especially with the charters, we are really looking forward to seeing what that'll entail as time goes on with all the different people with their experience. Um, with their knowledge and time and really good hearts.
Hey, chainsaw V-Tech. Thanks for the tenor chainsaw, keep it coming, boys. It all goes in the pot, it all goes in the pot, Scott University, I like that. Yeah, I mean, the disguise limit buys, um possibilities are endless, who knows, maybe someday Camp Scout is funding. Uh, some scholarships every year for, you know, uh biology degree or whatever it is, I don't know, it's, it's endless. Yeah. Amen to that. Scope coins running his logo, scope badges.
That'd be cute.
Yeah, guys, Dream Big is right, um TJ Butterfly, one of the best comments I've seen here pop up, Dream Big. Absolutely, Dream Big, we are, you should. Um, I hope you're, you're there watching, you're in these comments right now, you watch these videos, you realize like, world's full of good people. Full of good people, um people always talk down with the internet and how bad draining it is, um. Interactions like this, this, this pumps me up, this juices me up, it doesn't drain me at all, this really makes me see like, wow. There's, you know, two thousand plus people sitting wherever they are in the world, and we're all here coming together, sharing ideas and thoughts and stories and love. Uh, and you guys are being good to each other and good to us and. That's great, that's all we need, you guys all take that, you twenty-five hundred people here now take that into the real world all week. And that's the difference, everyone starts holding doors open, you know?
That's right.
Use guts go camp, absolutely.
Yes, yes, I saw someone say cooking classes with Kelly, woo, I would love to do that at the Camp Scout. That'd be very fun, songwriting by the campfire workshops, that'd be so nice. I just can't wait to meet you guys.
Another new member. Forty-six new members here tonight, wow. Said it before, maybe didn't say it in here, God love everyone who wants to be a member, um, cause that's a recurring. Support thing that YouTube can kind of bank on it, we can see what's happening with, um but. Pretty much, we're gonna offer every, everyone else, the full public, it's all the same thing. When first started memberships, like, oh, these live streams, these first two live streams were just for members, and between us. And the members that were there at the time, everyone kinda agreed that we shouldn't keep this for paying customers. This should be available in public, everyone, you don't wanna, you, you know, you don't have a rally, um, up in some park in a city. And like, no, 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 you can only come in the field and, you know, wave around your sign if you got ten bucks, that's not how it works. That's not how it should work here, um so, God love everyone still doing it, because you're, you know. You're more or less just, just doing the support, you're not getting special rights, um so thank you for that. But everyone who's not, don't worry, you're not gonna miss out, we're all here together, we're all here to try to do this together.
One big family, y'all.
I'm new, Barb, you're new, welcome, girl. Stoked friggin' townies.
Wow, you guys are so cool and so sweet for gifting these memberships to each other.
I know, and everyone knows the thing.
That is so awesome.
Members are just pouring in, you're right, forty-nine members, insane, it's a discord with a name, hmm, what's that?
No.
No.
No, my dear. No, it is Camp Scout.
Need a written what? We need a written mission statement to be able to explain to others about what you're doing, okay, maybe everyone missed, let me say the mission statement again.
She's short and sweet, so you can remember.
Lenore, thank you, girl, for, I'll say it as many times as I want. I should have it on top of my head, can't, mission statement for Camp Scout. Camp Scout helps people reconnect with nature through community-led outdoor experiences and education. Camp Scout helps people reconnect with nature through community-based outdoor experiences.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, say that three times fast.
Say that three times fast. Okay, hello Peyton, said hi.
Peyton said hi.
Thanks, Nick. Great mission statement, good, okay.
Hey, Jay, greetings from Virginia Beach, hello, hello. Oh, somebody had asked, uh, about the hurricane that's coming in, so Hurricane Michelle, right, is what it's called?
No idea what the name is, I haven't painted that much.
Yeah, I think they call it Hurricane Michelle, but it is very intense down in Jamaica. Um, but she they were, they may very well, I know. People have been commenting, they were like palm brain, oh my gosh, oh, what did I say?
You said Melissa. Yeah, yeah, I've been seeing the videos, this, man, what's going on in Jamaica is insane right now.
Oh, my goodness, yes, if you guys know anyone in Jamaica, pray for them, good lord, that's some serious stuff, um. But yeah, we're gonna catch like a tail end of it, I think, um, we've all pretty much prepared for a storm. Maddie and Gordy earlier today moved our old boat, Lucky Lady, who's normally moored down on the anchor. In the lower harbor, moved her up to the wharf, so she's tied up to something like actually pretty sturdy, um, and out of the wind. As much as she can be really, so we're, we're trying to protect ourselves like that. And limit the amount of random stuff around the house, so nothing blows into windows and things like that, so hopefully we'll be okay.
Yeah, supposed to start tomorrow evening. Into Saturday. Apparently it's talking a possible up to like a hun- or forty-five knots, over a hundred kilo per hour winds. Pretty tense for this old house, had it like, say a second here, Soul Villa Baja. Best luck your project, no, it will be wonderful, four hundred bones, MX, nobody even makes it, but God love you.
Thank you.
Or a thousand dollars right now.
Juniper.
Yeah, South Massachusetts rains pouring through here right now.
Oh, yeah.
It's not that bad at all, I'm sure, Owen.
Okay, hopefully, hopefully JD, hopefully we're good. Batten down the hatches, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, Soul Villa Baja, wow, that's right, man, for real.
Did we buy any candy for the trick-or-treaters? Hmm, no, we don't have any trick-or-treaters, the only trick-or-treaters would be me and Maddie going to Gord or Pat's house.
Have your parents been to the island yet? They must be so proud of you both. I'm so proud of you for everything you have done and will do going forward.
Thank you, Gigi.
Gigi Gogan.
Uh, no, my parents have not been to the island, they live down in Virginia. Um, my brother and sister came earlier this spring, so they've been here, but my parents have not been here.
Same, parents have not been here, parents are all out west, Alberta, see, some actually asking, do I have family in Edmonton, no. Um, but they're all out west, so no, actually, I haven't, haven't had any family here, except my two brothers from another mother's. Um, yeah, they'll be here someday, but. It's out for the faint of heart, that's for sure. Yeah, I don't know if Kelly's mom can hack it yet, God love her, if you're watching, Diane, sorry.
Yes, she wants, um, a flushing toilet, which granted, that's what she's used to, for sure. Sometime soon, my friends, we'll, we'll be getting there.
Dusty, Maddie, are you from Alberta or Newfoundland? Shame, shame. No, joking, Newfoundland, man, proud, you know, born and raised, proud. Um, out in Alberta, moved Alberta, you know, jumped in a truck and drove out there, I think I was like nineteen, just about twenty. Around there, maybe, uh maybe I'm back or, you know, a year early, maybe it was like nineteen, eighteen. Um, seven years in Alberta. Swinging rigs, loving rigs.
Rough neck life. You should run hot water to the toilet, hot water to the toilet, what do I do with hot water in a toilet? Hot water to the bathroom for a bathtub, yes.
How is this working? The people give each other memberships, I don't know.
I know, it's so cool, I think you can just like, buy a couple of memberships and like whoever jumps on them gets them, I think. Hey, y'all from West Virginia, Leroy.
Twenty-six hundred scouts, twenty-six hundred scouts, boys, I tell you, when I've been dreaming up this. Twelve, thirteen years ago, sitting wherever I was sitting, thinking about, at the time, what would be called Camp Freedom, which now is called Camp Scout. Never did I think this is how it would all come to be in real life, um through YouTube channel. Through something like this, sitting here with my wonderful partner in this old house, I'm doing it all like this, it's. Man, it's still, it still blows me away, it's, it's almost like the. The secret key to unlock this whole thing is this, is each other, um, like we said, I've seen people say it, you know. One raindrop doesn't do much, many raindrops make a river, and that's what we're doing here, we're starting to flow, we're flowing together. We've got multiple ways to communicate now, we've got Sunday videos, um, we're just a one-to-one, we got this. Which is, you know, some back and forth, now we got Discord, um, we can actually see you, actually hear your voice. Um, so we're having the in-person thing at the camps, and not just the camps or the charters, um, I also dream on doing some expeditions. I love to have everything on paper, um, where it can be, in my mind, it should be this simple, but it's not, twenty-twenty-five. Um, but it's built put where, hey, yeah, looking for ten people to go. Throw on some packs and, you know, go across the top Labrador for two weeks, who wants in? Um, and then just find ten scouts that do that, and also use, um. You know, the money for those nonprofit to cover your costs to come here, help you get the equipment, get the gear, get the training, whatever you need, um. Yeah. I think it'd be great, also, I don't know, this is one I thought about a long time ago, maybe it's too far. One I thought about a long time ago, maybe it's too far there or whatever, and it's very expensive, but my mind, at some point. American or calendar, Camp Scout, whether you guys do it or we do it ourselves. Someone is going to top Mount Everest with a scope flag. And I'd love, you know, you know, yeah, sure, Mount Everest is is not what it used to be. And yeah, it's it's all clogged up with too many people up there, regardless, I think it'd be pretty cool. Send someone up there with a scope flag on behalf of the scope community, maybe I'm crazy, maybe not. Um, maybe a different mountain, but someone is going, someone, and also someone that got no business being there. Someone that just sitting home on the toilet right now, and always dreaming, yeah, I climbed that mountain, and you wanna climb that mountain. We're gonna pick someone at some point, you're going up the mountain, brother, or sister, whoever you are, and someone's going up.
Yes, sir.
Can Mitch please post the invite Discord list, lots of us are asking, please, I'm in mod now, how much that works, pretty please. I'm in mod and I don't know how this works.
I guess you have to be invited to the Discord. Interesting.
Um, how do I share that?
Mitch, you better be watching comments, boy.
I'll just have to put it up, I'll just have to do a post. Community post, the Discord, or someone else to share it here, I'm sure someone's watching that's already in there and share it. People just gave me their memberships, unreal, sixty two memberships, amazing.
Kelly's brain fog is scoting tonight, thanks.
I got the link from YouTube, okay.
Okay, cool.
I guess someone's got it there. Play your chat description. He has coat sticker for my herd hat, I like that. Dusty, Dusty's got all the ideas.
I like the name Dusty.
Yeah, Mitch, ever seen someone in the moderate in the chat, that's the brother-in-law, that's Mitch, and that's. The guy right now who's been the behind the scenes guy for doing a lot of stuff, helping with the, meeting with bookkeepers and lawyers and all that kind of stuff. He's up on site, um, up north of Fort Mac, not gonna say which site. Uh, he might know, but he's out there, he's a working dog. And giving her, and he's, uh. Well, they give some of his spare time, just like we are are here this evening, trying to help make this happen, he just, he he wants. Good things happen, he's got kids and he, you know, agrees that, uh, world needs more of this kind of stuff.
Yeah, Kyle Mitch for the win, yes, let's give some love to Mitch.
Yeah, good work, Mitch.
Ooh, a scope grocery bag, t-shirt, cap, uh, hat and decal for a truck, I like that.
What can we expect for Sunday?
Oh, yeah, secret, secret, gotta keep you guessing.
Yes, go t-shirt, okay, a lot of people, I guess, maybe it's your first chat. Merch has been ordered, and we're not just gonna launch a website and you're not gonna get. You know, print on demand shirt from lord knows where, that's gonna be complete, whatever crap. Um, my sister has been handling, you know, the fashion, she's a fancy girl. And she loves that kind of stuff, she's she's been going around to different printers and whatnot, and she's found the the ideal company to work with. Down in Calgary, Alberta, um, the order's in, I think there's five hundred. Units, pieces, uh, of assorted whatnot, between hats, shirts, sweaters, um. No mugs yet, no, like I want mugs, we got some stickers, I think, um, and that's all gonna be for sale in, let's say. Within three weeks.
Yeah, yeah, we're very excited for the merch, we can't wait to see you guys with your scot hats and shirts and all of that. It'll be so cool to see you out and about, oh my goodness. I'd love some whatnot, yes, exactly, exactly.
My wife and our two kids watch every week. Kansas City, I think it speaks for all of us, though, we love being part of the community, oh, thank you, Andrew G.
Thanks, Andrew.
Welcome to your kids.
We love you guys, thank you.
Kansas City, good spot. Place part about like before.
I saw Maddie Thornhill, we're actually Facebook friends, scot aprons, please, girl, I made a scot apron like. Way earlier this year at a canvas that we had drop cloth on the floor upstairs, it was extra. And I wanted to do some fun project, anyway, I made a scot apron, embroidered that thing, and I think it's pretty good. I wish I could make all the scot aprons, that'd be so fun, but. Yeah, maybe eventually we'll get some good scot aprons out, cause I know a lot of y'all love to cook, and whether you're on the barbecue or you're baking bread. It's nice to have your clothes protected, you know?
That's the goal, eventually go to your down the road, the scot merch, um, could be that. Instead of us just getting it from the printers, like we're doing it grassroots as we can right now, but it's not our own original stuff. Uh, maybe someday Kelly can be sending her drawings over to wherever. And write to the manufacturer, actually making scot products. Write for raw stuff, that'd be pretty cool.
That's right. Yeah, this past winter, when we had lots of time, we were just chilling out, I shouldn't say just chilling out, we were staying alive, but. Lots of time to draw and design things, so I was designing jackets and those aprons. Cool pants, like tactical outdoor pants, so yeah, I mean. Once you open up the the can, there's lots to be spread out on the table, so I'm excited, excited to see where that leads.
Soon W. All right, peeps, well, uh, quick touchback on all like the bullet points for Pila might have got here, this is last time we ran out. While we really talked about tonight, um, we're looking for help, serious inquiries only. Send email with your subject title, um, board member application. You will be vetted, um, remember that it will be public, everyone here in this chat, everyone in the YouTube channel on the Discord. Will have your information, they will hold you accountable, along with us and the lawyers, everyone else. Um, please no buts, um, only people that want to actually help, there's a lot of good people out there, we need your help for a board member. Also need someone to help the Discord, um, please, again, serious applications only.
Qualified professionals.
Qualified professionals, um. Yeah, we're getting lots of new members. Biggest priority, well, you know, what can, uh, the members do to help? All you people, what can you do to help right now, cause I mean, right now in the stage we're at, we're slowly, um. Funding this thing, we're pulling up our money, no money's been spent yet out of this pool, we'll keep track of it and share it all monthly. Um, with you, how much been made, um, the lawyers. Have been contacted, the lawyers are doing their lawyer thing, our next meeting with them, we won't hear back for possibly two weeks. Um, and then it'll be probably in a few months before we even get close to registered status, um. Which we do need that before we start applying for swaths of land from from, you know, a grant or whatnot, um. Yeah, so what can you do in the meantime, biggest thing you do, like Kelly said, just talk about it, um. Go to work, go to wherever you go, when you're looking for something, talk about, talk about Camp Scout, talk about scout outdoors, um. Share the ideas of this, the more you talk about it with just a random person, could be just some old. Grizzled skipper sitting on the front step, you mentioned Camp Scout too, and he asks you some questions, you want people, we need people to poke holes in this. You know, you need that old fellow pokes holes, it's like, oh, that's this, or oh, that's silly, or whatever, um, because the more we poke holes in now. Stronger we can build this, um, talk about it with people, share the word, get ideas, share your ideas. Get into Discord, connect together, um, be patient with Discord, we'll we'll get in there and we'll. Sort it and clean it up or someone will. Also, for the members, I've seen some members talking about maybe there should be a Discord for the members, um. Maybe that's something to do, apparently there's a way to link it together, YouTube with the Discord, so. Uh, we don't want people to think that this thing is gonna get so big that your voice will be muffled, we don't want that, we wanna be able to hear everyone. Yeah, with that, one last thing, I didn't really, kinda wanted to mention this, kinda didn't, I had it on a note here. But then I decided I wasn't gonna say it, now I'm deciding I am gonna say it. Emails, we're getting lots of emails, um, and someone asked like, what keeps me up at night out here, becomes all this. Um, and it's feeling like I can't get enough time to to get everything done. That's all this, like, we got all our actual work to do, building and fixing this house, film that, making these videos, and then just our day-to-day. Lives, keeping ourselves going here, haul water for sink, feeding the pigs, whatever it is, um. A lot of emails come through, I do feel bad, I I try, I get up in the mornings or evenings, um, and put in some time with the emails, I I never seem to keep up to it. So. My sister suggested, maybe she can start going through the emails, answering to some. I up until now, I've been resisting, cause I was like, I almost rather not respond than not respond myself. Asking you guys here now, what do you guys think, there's twenty three hundred ninety two people here right now, let me know in the comments right now, um. You think it's okay to have my sister Danielle respond to some of the emails? And tell you that it's her, this is Danielle, not Kelly or Maddie. And, you know, not the personal emails, some emails are directly to us, beautiful letters, um. Okay, yes, lots of yeses. Oh, you guys are so great, I know how great that is.
Perfectly okay, yeah, a little help, oh.
Yeah, okay. So I just didn't, I really didn't want anyone to feel like there's barriers. Being built and that this is getting too big, we can't reach us, um, yeah, okay, great. So Danielle, my sister, if you see a response in the email saying, this is Danielle, or possibly Mitch. Cause her husband, my brother-in-law, they've been together since, I don't know, high school. At Glover Town, high school sweethearts, great couple, love them, um, they're in Alberta, Canada. So we might get a response from them in emails, thank you for accepting that because. Yeah, that's been, uh, one of the things weighing over my head, just trying to keep up with all this, cause it's a lot, it's a lot.
Yeah, and yeah, we don't want you guys to feel like your voices aren't heard, or like you're being ignored or anything like that, so we're really glad to hear that you guys. Are totally willing to get an email from Danielle or Mitch. And know that, of course, even if they respond, we can all the time go check and see what you said, or check on the email, or we can respond back to you. Um, yeah, it's really just a like a time thing and how much time we have to spend on emails. Um, in congruence with living life, um, and doing what we do.
It all takes time out here. Kelly was just out this evening before supper. Throwing a five gallon bucket down the well out here to get some gray water for dishes and grumbling how how. You know, how much effort it is basically to do all these things, um, not just haul the water in, since we got this new sink now with no plumbing. And haul water out too, Kelly brings the water in, wash the dishes, we catch that water underneath the sink, and I'm gonna haul that water back out, pour it in the bank.
Not a hundred percent ideal, but she's doing the job for now.
No, it doesn't cost anything with Discord, free. We're gonna try not offer anything that is not free for everyone. Thank you to all the members who are still, you know, good-hearted enough and open enough, still wanna be a part of this, help support it. Cause I'm telling you, that monthly thing, that's gonna be the backbone, that's a that's a recurring thing, sixty nine new memberships here tonight. We're at one point two thousand dollars Canadian and comments and super likes. Can you speak on the day when your video went viral?
I think I remember that day.
Do you?
I think we were on Cape Millie, and we had hit a little spot of service, Cape Millie is our big long liner boat, and it was winter, I'm pretty sure, yeah. And yeah, we, you checked the YouTube and you were like, oh my gosh, I hit a hundred K, we were like, what, that's insane, but yeah. And now it's a lot more than that, but, uh, yeah, it was crazy. It's awesome to see all the support and all the love for the Smurf blue house, this little, this little house out here, like, yeah, it's really amazing. We're just so many people.
So many people, the idea of a hundred thousand people, I have so many eyes, um, and the first time it happened, it was, uh. A real, I guess unexpected, so I even said to Kelly before we uploaded that first video in the series, that really did go viral. Um, said, I don't know if people are gonna wanna watch this, um, this is a whole lot of tearing down an old house. That's what it is, there's a whole lot of tearing down an old house, remember, I was like, kinda bummed about it like before, yeah, this is gonna do well. Um, and I've been uploading videos at that point for over four years, and none of those videos. Would do well, sure, over time, they got some views and whatnot, they didn't do bad, some of them, um, but like, upload a video and just. Praying that the day that it'd get a thousand views in a day, um. And yeah, that all changed real quick, and here we are.
Yeah, you guys jumped on the scout train real quick. You guys have been riding that thing for as long as you can, and I love it, it's amazing, we've got so much more to share. Especially with this new chapter of like parenthood and us out here, and that whole chapter. There are so many moments and milestones we're gonna share with you guys, and I am so stoked for it, so stoked. To document all like the time changes and just how everything works around here, like, yeah.
Full Truman Show, baby.
Full Truman Show.
And you know what, some people think how how much time must take and the work and stuff, absolutely, but. After four years of making videos up until now, and selling everything that I owned. Four times over again and again, and going and getting random jobs in Alberta, shoveling cow shit in a dairy barn. Or whatever it was, just enough money for the next canoe, for the next trip, to make the next video, um. Now that we got this community going and this role like this, you better believe it, we ain't slowing down and we ain't stopping, that's why we haven't missed a week. Yes, it's a lot of work to get a video out every single Sunday, plus live our life and actually do everything. That we're doing, um, but it is a privilege and honor, and thank you for making that possible. We're not gonna squander it, we're gonna keep working just as hard or harder, um, to keep these going for you guys, because, um. Yeah, it's been a long road getting here, and you don't stop pushing as soon as the machine starts moving, you know, we're just. The machine just kicked off, and not stopping that, baby, work way too hard, put way too many hours in. Um, to build this up, and, uh, yeah, you guys are making it all possible, so thank you.
Yeah, and some of you guys have been here since beginning, since before any of the house stuff, but with all the house stuff, we are on.
Gord, Gordon and Town Hall one day.
Oh, that'd be super fun, I saw, we want Gord, we want Gord. Uh, I was just gonna say, yeah, it's amazing, some of y'all have been here before the house, some of you are been here when the house video launched. But we are on week thirty eight in a row, thirty eight weeks strong. Which I don't know the last time I did something that consistently, I know you don't either. Most of us have no idea, besides like drinking coffee, yep, done that for thirty nine weeks straight or whatever, but. Yeah, really putting your effort towards something and having you guys here in the chat. Um, in the comments, in messages, picking stuff up from the post office that you guys send. Is so amazing, like you guys really go the extra mile all the time, so I just wanted to say a very heartfelt thank you to all of you here.
E- everyone agrees. Gordy for president. I've been trying to convince Gord to run for premier since I'm at him. Core cooking video, I know, we all love Gord, I love that you guys all love Gord just as much, imagine the day. That we have a workshop at Camp Scout, at Gord running. That's coming, that's coming.
That'll be booked out, y'all. I love it.
Let's wrap this up.
All right, you guys.
I'm so, it's hard to say goodbye when there's so many people saying good things. Give me that purple sauce.
He laughed so hard when he was, he was like, man, I feel so funny, like. The sauce isn't normally purple, but it's the only color food coloring I had, I actually had a lady writing a letter, she was like. What is the recipe for that purple sweet and sour sauce? I was like, well, it's this and that, but if you want it to be true authentic Gord, you gotta get the purple food coloring.
Yeah, we get the purple.
You gotta get the purple, kid.
Okay, peeps, we love you, um, thank you for love, we're still coming in, look, eighty two. New members during this chat, sixteen hundred ninety six likes. Um, one point three thousand dollars Canadian raised, keep it going, peeps, um, have a great week, we'll see you guys Sunday. Go out there in your real world, wherever that is, and just hold the door out in front of the next person in front of you in the line, um. Just do something simple, that's all we're gonna do, if everyone starts holding doors open, we're gonna be a good place.
Yes, and look people in the eyes, look your cashier in the eyes and say thank you.
Just do that.
You don't know how much eye contact means for people nowadays, especially since we're all like this all the time, means a lot, it's like soul contact. I acknowledge you, I acknowledge you guys, I love you.
Love you, scouts.
Love you, scouts, take care, have a good morning or have a good night, and we'll see you on Sunday.
See you, Soup Can.
Love you, guys.